We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have meeting documents available for review down next to Commissioner Hybarger.
Just a reminder to silence your cellphone. And Craig is here if you need a listening device. That takes us to routine business. First item is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from January 28th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $470,876.94.
Pay the bills.
Second.
And a second, any comments? Commissioner Barth?
I'm sure this is a pretty low amount for what we sometimes get, but in today's bills we have one cremation for an indigent person for $2,000. And we have, I counted, at least 31 people we paid rent for. However, obviously, we didn't have any multimillion dollar payouts.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? All right, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are several reports there that I'd recommend for your review. We have the Minnehaha County Coroner's Report, the Public Advocate Report, and the Safety Committee's Annual Report. Did you want to go over the Safety Committee report at all? Come forward. Just introduce yourself, that'd be great.
Doug Blomker, I'm with the Office of Emergency Management, and I chair the Safety Committee.
Thank you. We appreciate all the work that you guys do all year long. As you note in the report, you do a nice job of saving us some real money. We appreciate that. Commissioner Hybarger?
That was actually going to be my comment, is that the credits for this last year were $47,999 towards Workman's Comp, so thank you very much for the hard work you do. And they were recognized several times with awards through the Safety Council. That's not the right term, but yes, you were recognized at the Commission National or the Commission State Convention this last fall, so.
It's a good group effort. There's a number of very good people on the committee that all join in, so it's a good team, so we all pitch in, we try and help as much as we can, so.
And we are kind of hard-hearted up here most of the time and talk about money, but really, safety is the ultimate goal.
Yes.
And you guys do a good job of keeping our folks educated on ways that they can keep themselves safe and reviewing our facilities to make sure that they are as safe as they can be made, so we appreciate it.
Very good.
Anything else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks to you and the entire committee. Okay, so that takes us to item five, Personnel Actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. The first item I have for you is anniversaries. We have Julie Anderson, Administrative Secretary at JDC, Kim Burley-Adamsen, who is with the Auditor's Office, they're both celebrating five years of service, Brittany Crawford at JDC celebrating 10, Dan Kaiser at the 24/7 Program celebrating 15 years of service, and Patricia Albrecht at the jails celebrating 25. I know that we have at least two people with us today. We have Tom Moisek in the Treasures Office celebrating five years of service. And of course, back in the corner, we have Anthony Simon, our videographer, who's celebrating five years as well.
Did I miss anybody?
Do they want to speak?
Tom?
Sure.
Well, congratulations to all of those folks, and we do really appreciate your service, and thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you. The next item I have is to record the county volunteers for January of 2020. Another long list, and we're a little bit shy of 300, but it always impresses me when we're getting those numbers so close. It seems like when I first started, it was around, you know, 220 to 5, 250, and as we've grown, our volunteer group has as well, so we're very grateful to them.
I would echo that. It's actually very humbling to look through this list and how many people just give freely their time to the county and to the rest of the citizens of Minnehaha County, so thank you to all of them.
The next item I have actually pertains to some restructuring in the Air Guard Division of the Sheriff's Office. We have two requests, one to reclassify the Air Guard Supervisor, which is currently a pay grade 16, to Air Guard Division Supervisor at a pay grade 20, and then to increase the rate of pay for Keith Winia, who's serving in that role. We also have a request to convert four Air Guard Security Officer two positions from a pay grade 13 to a newly created position of Air Guard Shift Supervisor at pay grade 17. In effect, what we're doing or attempting to do through this restructure is to provide direct supervision for each of the four main shifts that we have out there. And then in recognition of how much the security has changed out in that division and continued to grow, and in recognition of the supervision that Keith has for all of those programs and services, including supervision of not only our own staff, but staff at the airbase, we're recommending that reclassification. And Keith is here, if you have any...
February 8th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So the next item or motion would be to convert four Air Guard Security Officer two positions, pay grade 13, to a newly created position of Air Guard Shift Supervisor, pay grade 17, effective February 22nd, 2020.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, that takes us to item six, Abatements, there are none. Item seven, Notices and Requests, there are none. Item eight, Planning and Zoning, notices there are none. Item nine, Petition for Compromise of Lean, there are none. So this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's somebody here who would like to speak, this is your opportunity. Seeing no one rushing the podium, we'll move on to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider 2019 to 2020 retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License for a Homestead Brew. Olivia?
Thank you. A Homestead Brew has submitted an application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota Farm Wine License. It was discussed with them whether they wanted the 2019-2020 year or the next upcoming one because we're more than halfway through, and they do want the 2019-2020. It has been provided to the state's attorney, sheriff's department in planning and zoning, and I have not received any concerns or complaints.
Okay, any questions for Olivia?
Olivia, what's the cost on that?
Yes, let me double check here for you before I tell you wrong. It is 300.
Thank you.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so if the applicant and proponents may speak if they wish to. If you don't want to speak, that's fine, too. If you do want to speak, I need you to come to the microphone and identify yourself.
You want me to?
Fine, okay. I'll give you another opportunity if something comes up. If there's anyone here who's opposed, this is their opportunity to speak. Since there's nobody opposed, you probably don't need to give a rebuttal either, so I think you're good.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Yes. Hybarger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the Equitable Sharing Agreement and Certification Form. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Captain of the Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have in front of you a request to sign an equitable sharing agreement and certification form. What this is, this is an annual proactive measure that the Sheriff's Office does, like I said, on an annual basis with the Department of Justice and Department of Treasury, that would allow us to stay in good standing, that if we would participate in any sort of federal case where there was assets or funds that were seized or forfeited as part of that case, we would then potentially be allowed or awarded a percentage of those funds based on our percentage of involvement with that case. So in order to participate in this program, we have to report on an annual basis any funds that we've received as part of that agreement or spent. In this year's, there was zero received and zero spent, so not a big form to sign, but again, it's an annual form that we request to be signed.
Commissioner Karski?
Could have should have asked you this earlier, Joe. Any downside to signing an agreement like this? I mean, for example, if we seize assets, do we share them also, or is it just assets that are seized by somebody else that gets shared with us?
So this would talk about anytime that it's a federal case that would be prosecuted on the federal level, that we played, a lot of times, local law enforcement plays a major role in that with knowing the individuals, providing surveillance, or maybe interviews, whatnot. So we get a percentage of our involvement with it. As far as sharing assets and seizures from local to local, that does sometimes occur as well, too, but what this is talking is about the federal down to the local level.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So that takes us to item 12, which is a presentation on the Family Visitation Center. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Luke Como, I'm the Executive Director of the Family Visitation Center, and good to see all of you this morning. I just wanted to touch base and thank you again for your ongoing support of the Family Visitation Center, where our goal is to keep children physically and emotionally safe while they connect with their family. In 2019, your funds helped provide $25,000 directly to our private pay costs, and that $25,000 from your budget helped serve 163 children and provided over 1,000 hours of supervised visitation so they could connect with their family. It also helped provide 312 exchanges, and those are situations where both parents have custody of their children outside of Family Visitation Center, but it is kind of like an oil and water mix if they are in contact with each other, and so we recommend not exchanging children at McDonald's or Walmart parking lots, but doing it in a safe place like Family Visitation Center, so that the parents do not see each other and we're able to exchange the children from one parent to the other and keep children physically and emotionally safe. And so your funds last year had a great impact on our community and our children that we serve, and we thank you so much for that. Certainly, we see trends in what we do, and certainly, mental health and substance abuse are high predominant issues and concerns that we see. But in the 20 years that we've been in existence now, 2019 was the highest year for us where we had dads contact us who wanted to have first-time contact with their children, who said, you know, I know I have a son or a daughter out there, and I would like to go through the process to be able to connect with them, and so we would help guide them in regards to getting an attorney or just pointing them in the right direction. And then a lot of times, the attorneys would say, hey, why don't you meet at Family Visitation Center for, you know, four to six weeks, since this is your first time to meet with your child, and make sure that stays safe, and you guys can have, then we'll move on to just, you know, having your child outside of that circumstance, outside of using Family Visitation Center. We had a high predominant of that in 2019, more than we've ever had in 20 years. And so certainly, we deal with tough issues with, like I said, with mental health and substance abuse, but it's also very encouraging to see parents coming in and stepping up and saying, I want to do the right thing, I want to have a relationship with my child, and we see them for a few weeks, and they get connected, and it's pretty joyous to have the opportunity where a parent gets to come in and meet their, you know, six-year-old child for the first time that they've never met, and we get to have that opportunity to help them, guide them, as both parties are nervous about this introduction into their parent or their child and be able to bond over a video game or whatever it is, and then they use our services for a few weeks and then move on. So all of that is made part by the funds that you helps provide for us, so I want to thank you so much for that.
Thank you for being here this morning. Does anybody have any questions? Commissioner Hybarger?
Comment and a question, and thank you for the service you do, because obviously, you're affecting the youngest people in our population, and we want to keep them out of the justice system by providing them a good path forward with both parents on both sides of their family. I know that, or at least I assume that you guys are busting at the seams, and I know there's been conversation over many years of trying to find a larger facility. Is that still in the plans, or is there any progress made on that, or are you guys kind of sitting tight right now?
We don't have a specific facility that we're going to move to, but we are certainly with the Board of Directors, and we have a management agreement with AVERA to help find us a place, because yes, we are serving a lot of children, and our goal is to move, but as we know, that we serve a lot of individuals who come from the downtown region, and so being in that neighborhood is where we would like to preferably be versus the outskirts of Sioux Falls, and we know that's also the highest price in regards to buildings, so we are actively looking and just hoping to find something, so it is on our radar.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for being here this morning. So that takes us to item 13, which is a presentation on the Suland Heritage Museum. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bill Hoskins, Director for the Suland Heritage Museums. Here today to give you a brief presentation on the Suland Heritage Museums. We operate the Old Courthouse Museum, the Pettigrew-Homan Museum, and the Irene Hall Museum Resource Center. In 2019, attendance was steady, up a little bit onsite, down a bit in terms of our outreach and the schools in particular. We had visitors from 50 states, from the District of Columbia, Puerto Rico, Guam, and 30 foreign countries, the top among those being Canada, Germany, and the United Kingdom. We were blessed in 2019 with some extremely generous public donors. Several of the programs that and goals that we had were, they really helped us get the job done. We had donors from the Daughters of the American Revolution gave us money for collection supplies. We have a collection of photos that came from the Department of Equalization in 2010 when they went digital. Some of those photos are of properties in the county dating back to the 1930s. It's a collection that's heavily used by the public, and the DAR provided us some resources for that. The museum, Suland Heritage Museum's Alliance, a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit, did some fundraising, raised $36,000 to buy a specialized storage furniture for our Native American collection, and that which was great. We had a private donor who acquired a major photographic collection, a collection that really spans the last 60 years and fills a lot of our holes in our photo collection for the 1950s, 60s, and 70s. We've been fortunate that we also had a number of donors to the museum's endowment. The museum's endowment is something that we have out there to help supplement tax dollars in support of the museum's operation. Revenue from the endowment comes into our budget through the museum's Special Enterprise Fund, and that's where it's accounted for and budgeted in the budget process. We also had 145 volunteers who really make a huge difference in our operation. They're fantastic. 2019 was really a year of transition for the Suland Heritage Museums. We moved from operating two sites, the Old Courthouse and Pettigrew Museum, seven days a week, to operating three sites with the same staff. That transition also, we're moving things out of the Old Courthouse Museum. We were able to shuffle some spaces, moved our exhibit staff from first floor up to third floor, where the collections management staff had been before they moved to the Resource Center, and were able to then expand an exhibit gallery on first floor. That today houses an exhibit called Let's Ride, an exhibit of vintage motorcycles. There are a number of projects that we're seeing as we move stuff out of the way. Talk Pointing, an ongoing project at the Old Courthouse Museum. We have some budding roofing issues and some window work that needs to be done, all of which I think are being addressed to a certain extent in the building fund, but that's something going on. Also in 2020, we'll be having Greg Hanstad, he's a structural engineer that we've been working with for a number of years, come back and resurvey that building. As we're taking the load off the structure, we're seeing some changes in that. Our principal focus for the last number of years has been on management of the museum's collection. As a staff, we've been building the Resource Center. We've been packing up the museum's collection, moving 120,000 objects out to the Museum Resource Center and starting to unpack them. And that's really been a part of that transition that we've been going through. I think in 2020, we're going to start refocusing again on our public dimension, on our interpretive program, programs, educational programs for the public, our exhibits, even the store and rental opportunities, really what the public dimension is. One of the programs that I'm looking at, and we'll be discussing with the museum board actually later this week, is a program from the American Association for State and Local History called Visitors Count. And ASLH is a national museum organization, and they really help people do visitor evaluations, and in the end, they will do benchmarking and a comparison of how your museum is, our museum is doing versus other museums in their category nationwide. And so that's one of the program. We do continue to evaluate our programs on an ongoing basis, looking at them to make sure that we're trying to get the most out of our dollar in terms of return with public interest. We're exceptionally lucky to live in a great community. Sioux Falls is a fantastic community, has a number of really great museums. And in September of 2020, the Mountain Plains Museum Association, a national museum organization is going to be meeting here in Sioux Falls. And in fact, the Mountain Plains Museum Association Board will be here for a preview meeting this Thursday and Friday, and touring a number of the buildings and sites. I did include a little bit on the numbers, and if you have any questions about the museums, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, thank you. Are there questions here this morning? Commissioner Barth?
Bill, it's a pleasure being your liaison, but how many people do you expect for the conference this September?
They usually run between 300 and 400. I'm hoping for about 350 here in Sioux Falls. Last year, they were in Albuquerque, New Mexico, and had a little over 400. The year before, they were in Bozeman, Montana, and had about 300.
Hybarger?
Been out to the new facility, and it's beautiful, and got to walk through the back room, as they have things now neatly stacked and organized, and we're getting them out of the attic, and wondering how much more stuff is left in the attic to move and categorize, and also, you are having a structural engineer come back and look at the old courthouse again just to make sure we're all safe, and might be interesting for a tour at some point again for the commission to go through and see those vast open spaces that were one times crammed full of stuff.
Yep. The collections are all out of the attic.
Great.
And some of the other spaces that were challenged on third floor, particularly a room we call Three and a Half. We are looking at, we have both public behind-the-scenes tours of the Museum Resource Center, and we're planning a new behind-the-scenes tour of the Old Courthouse Museum that will focus more on its architecture and history, that will be debuting later this spring. And certainly, anytime the commission's interested, we can set something up.
I would recommend it. I was in the courthouse attic when it was full, and would look forward to seeing and hearing history, and also just being out the new building and seeing. I wanted to spend more time, I think the staff member was rather busy, and he gave me as much time as possible, but boy, it would be really fun to go and look. There's some interesting things that are in our museum that you don't see on an everyday basis, so.
Two things I enjoy, looking at old photographs and going through old buildings, and I'm glad to hear the structural engineers coming back, because I know that things were getting pretty dire straits not that many years ago with the load of what was in that building, so looking forward to that report and actually going through the building. With the photographs, you mentioned receiving an extensive collection. I mean, are those available to the public?
Yes, they are.
Like in photo albums, electronically?
We're working on electronically. They are available at the Irene Hall Resource Center. It's what you're, what are you looking for, and we would help you find them. Interesting, the photographer in question is in his 90s, and he's still taking pictures, and he doesn't want people to know that he's, think that he's retiring, but he's given us, I think it's right around 1,200 images, and there's some fantastic shots of downtown Sioux Falls. But things, when you see them, you will recognize.
Very good.
Great. Any other? Yes, Commissioner Barth?
For some of you, 60 years ago seems like a long time, but in, you know, in another 60 years, it'll be 120, and, you know, it's, a lot of what we need to save is stuff from today, because clearly, these things may be mundane to us at this time, but going forward, they'll be rarities. I would say, looking at the building maintenance and stuff, I've seen some of the revelations from moving stuff out of there, and, you know, there's areas where the mortar between stones is sand now, et cetera, and Bill is doing a great job of keeping tabs on it. And we are so very lucky to have so many volunteers working on museum events, and to have a director like we do here, who is respected amongst his peers. I'm looking forward to this conference coming up this fall.
All right, anything else? Lots of exciting things going on. Thank you for coming and sharing a little bit this morning. That takes us to item 14, which is to authorize the chairperson to sign the 2020 addendum to the Healthcare Services Agreement between Armour Correctional Health and Minnehaha County. Warden Matson, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Matson, Warden in the jail. In front of you today to have the chairperson sign our 2020 addendum to our healthcare services contract with Armour. This is about a $250,000 decrease from 2019, thanks to the work of Jeff Gromer and having Armour reevaluate their staffing, and then that combined with the management fee that we have monthly and their projected monthly cost, we ended up with significant savings this year.
Questions?
Just an applied. Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to item 15, which is to consider bid results and award recommendations for Highway Project MC 1701, and authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with re-construction for Highway 146 reconstruction. DJ, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. On January 15th, we had a bid opening for County Highway 146 reconstruction at 6.91 miles, just under seven miles of roadway between Highway 11 and the Minnesota border. This is south of Brandon and Valley Springs on the southeast corner of the county. On the 15th, we had 10 bids from nine different bidders. We had five bids for one alternate, which was asphalt concrete pavement, and five bidders for concrete pavement. After the bid results came in, and we verified all the bid tabulations, we conducted a life cycle cost analysis to determine the cost of the pavement throughout a 50-year lifecycle or a 50-year design life. This included the initial construction costs and long-term maintenance costs. The results of that lifecycle cost analysis determined that it would be a lower-cost payment to go with a higher initial cost alternate of concrete pavement at this time, and that would save us money throughout the 50-year design life. and that would save us money throughout the 50-year design life. And so if anybody has any questions, I can go through the details of that. If not, I'm asking for your award based off of our recommendation for reconstruction for $9,422,000, $9,422,322 for reconstruction.
Chair, question.
Commissioner Barth.
DJ, do you do the life cycle cost, life cycle cost analysis on all of these projects?
We don't do it on every single project, for example, like a bridge project or something like that. But when we do reconstruction projects, beginning with the 137 project that we paved last year, we did do life cycle cost analyses on that. The reconstruction project that we did prior to this, which was County Highway 149 north of Hartford, we did not have alternate bids on that. And so this would be the second reconstruction project out of the three that we've done since I've started at the county. Last year, when we did the life cycle cost analysis, just with the different bids that we had, asphalt was the winner of that, and so we paved that road in asphalt.
Commissioner Hagerger.
It's hard to think of that 50 years from now, probably none of us will be here. DJ will probably still be, well, may need out of the county, but I'm talking living. And the cost analysis makes sense. I think DJ spoke to every one of us individually and answered questions and talked through it, and so based on his recommendation, I would vote, or move to approve for the asphalt, excuse me.
For?
I think, just to clarify, so your motion would be to authorize the chairperson to sign the agreement with reconstruction, which is concrete?
Yes, sorry. Yes, that's what I meant to say.
Okay.
I said it backwards, didn't I?
Is there a second?
I'll second it, and I have an additional question, I guess.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth.
DJ, how many other roads do we have that are concrete?
We've got one pavement section right now that's concrete. It's just northwest of this highway, and on the first page of my briefing memo that shows the project map, you can actually see that Madison Street, which is County Highway 142, two miles to the north, and extending west from Highway 11.
Commissioner Karski.
I, for one, enjoy driving on concrete a whole lot more than I do asphalt, but the initial upfront costs concern me. I mean, it's almost $1.7 million that we could be putting into another project that may be delayed because we're putting more money into concrete pavement. I personally am having a hard time justifying it, and I, when we talk about the life cycle costs, where do they intersect? I mean, is it at the, and I think you showed it in a table, but is it at the 10th year, the 20th year, the 30th year? Where does it become beneficial to do that?
So I guess there's a couple of comments that I'll make based off of your question there. One, the number of years that they intersect, I don't have those numbers in front of me. The table that you're probably referencing has a few different columns based off of construction pricing indexing. And so the intersection point on that is probably somewhere between 2.5% annual increase of construction costs and 3% annual increase in construction costs. And when we did this life cycle analysis, we compared a lot of different variables just to try to establish what the trends are. And so what we've seen since 2003 in our contracted projects that we bid is somewhere around a 5.5% increase in costs, and so we're well above that, 2.5% to 3% in that break-even for construction indexing. And the initial cost of $1.69 million more for concrete pavement than asphalt was definitely a major concern for us. We don't want to put ourselves in a bad position where we're not able to complete other projects. And so we ran through an analysis of our long-range plan and determined that we were going to still be able to complete all of the projects that are in our five-year plan. We're going into our five-year budget process here in the next month or so, and we're going to be looking at probably adding projects to that five-year plan, especially out in that new fifth year, but even in the years before, in the years one through four, which weren't previously budgeted. The reason that it's easier for us to afford is last year, we received just over $1,073,000 from the state of South Dakota in unexpected revenues. That money is dedicated towards bridge repairs or rehabilitation or replacement, and we've identified a project with two bridge replacements that are under construction right now that we're going to be able to use those funds to pay for. So that frees up just over a million dollars there. And then with savings from other projects that we've seen over the last year, that makes up $400,000 to $500,000. So we're at a million and a half dollars already that we've been able to make up. And so putting that towards the $1.69 million in our long-range plan doesn't really have a major impact. But again, I just want to stress that we wanted to make sure we weren't going to be delaying or putting out any projects that we had planned on doing because of a bid award that we weren't necessarily budgeted for.
Comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I recently was in Pierre, and a Minnehaha County legislator made the comment that our township roads and bridges are, don't need to be replaced. And he specifically mentioned a bridge going east from Baltic as being a waste of a million dollars. What was our cost on that bridge?
I don't have the cost right in front of me. I think that it was somewhere around between 400 and 500,000, and that was removing an existing bridge and putting in a box culvert.
A box culvert or multiple?
It's a multi-cell box culvert.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments about this project? I would say that, oh, go ahead, DJ.
I'll make one more comment, too. So when we looked at the table of the summarizing, the different construction cost indexing that we looked at, when, and we project that out, like I was explaining to Commissioner Barth before, we looked at this last year, we chose the lower life cycle cost for asphalt pavement. We looked at it this year, we're recommending the lower-cost concrete pavement. Assuming that we always choose that lower cost, when we look at the construction indexing at 5%, and again, we're at 5.5% here locally right now, but at 5%, we calculated that over the life cycle of this 50-year time period, we'd be looking at a cost savings by choosing the lower life cycle cost of $1.8 million annually, when you project that out for every one of these projects. And so I think that's the number that's really important to the Highway Department when we look at this. If we just looked at every project individually, and we said, okay, well, maybe we could do the more expensive life cycle cost asphalt pavement this time because it's a lower initial cost today, if we started doing that, we could end up in the future having a really significant annual budget impact, in this case, $1.8 million, when we look at that 5% construction cost indexing. And so that's really the key that is important to us. We're looking at long-term sustainability. We're not, we're not trying to set ourselves up for long-term budget problems. We're trying to set ourselves up for long-term sustainability and being able to afford maintenance and reconstruction in the future when that time comes.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Karski.
DJ, I'm not trying to beat you up on this, but when you looked at the long term, you took it over the long term, and you looked at all of our roads in the county.
Right.
If they were all concrete, that's what, correct?
Not necessarily if they were all concrete, no. If they were all concrete.
That was my assumption.
Okay.
And the reason I'm asking is because last year, you said it was asphalt, and this year, it's concrete. So I mean, if we looked at all of them, we'd save $1.8 million a year, but if we change it every year depending on bid, bids and materials and just projections, it's really hard, it's really more of a moving number, isn't it?
It's definitely a moving number. And so this is the best method that we have, and projecting out the long-term maintenance costs, projecting out the long-term budget impacts based off of what we know today. And so every year, we're going to have new bid numbers that we put into this type of an analysis, or every time we bid one of these projects, we're going to have new numbers. There's discount rates that the federal government releases every January that we put in to this analysis, and that varies from, right now, it's at .5% or .4%. 15 years ago, it was at 3%. And so that can change over time. And again, we're using the best information that we have available today, and the biggest impact to that decision is the bid numbers and the maintenance costs and what we have for construction costing index. Because we have a history of construction costing index going back to 2003, we feel pretty confident in that, and that's got the biggest impact of the decision-making tool for the life cycle analysis. And we look at the trends like we kind of talked about over the phone. We looked at 1.63% construction indexing increases. That's what FHWA releases as a nationwide number. The state of Minnesota has a number that they use that's 3.3%, so we looked at that because it's more a regional number that's maybe more identifiable for us. And then we looked at our own number. We use 5.0%. The numbers that we've seen are closer to 5.5%. But as you look at those three numbers for the indexing increases, that really sways the results of the life cycle cost analysis to the tune of $1.8 million. At 3.3%, concrete was the cheaper option by $161,000 annually. When you look at 1.6%, asphalt was the cheaper life cycle cost at $396,000 annually.
But those aren't realistic.
No, but again.
liaison, and it is complicated. And anybody who wants to look at the spreadsheet that he's attached, and you can see both, Make the best decision you can based on the information you have today, and that's all any of us can really do on any decision-making that we do about anything, let alone something that involves lots and lots and lots of columns on a spreadsheet with really little tiny numbers in them. You know, I know even internally, they worked hard on this and came up with, you know, I think, I think honestly, they were a little surprised by the results, and so that made them go back and dig in a little deeper and work a lot harder. They've been, they've been looking at this for a little while. And at the end of the day, I think there are experts in engineering and costing, and so I'm in support of doing this, especially after DJ was able to convince me and talk about the extra funding that was available and make sure that it wasn't going to adversely affect any other projects that we had prioritized, so.
Madam Chair, I have to echo your remarks, and I would say that until we got DJ, I think this kind of analysis would never have been done under the previous Highway Superintendent. And so I'm so glad to have a person of those qualifications in this job.
Commissioner Hagerger. Another question that I'd asked DJ was, you know, the length of this project, and it is, it starts at 115 and it ends at the border, and so it's one continuous long strip of concrete, excuse me, I said asphalt before, but concrete. And so it's kind of like a beginning and an end of a project, and it will be all complete. So we did have a conversation about what that would look like if you had asphalt on one end, and then ended up going to concrete and stuff, but this project is a.
If not, we have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with reconstruction for Highway 146 reconstruction in concrete. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hagerger.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to item 16, which is to consider a motion to approve and authorize chairperson to sign purchase agreements for three land parcels to require right-of-way for reconstructing Highway 149.
Commissioners, we have had several different agenda items over the last month or two on this County Highway 149 reconstruction project. This is the extension of the project that we completed a few years ago north of Hartford. This one goes up to Colton, or starts in Colton, goes south for five miles. We have today three different parcel transactions that we're requesting approval of from two different landowners, and we're purchasing.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to authorize you to sign that, these purchase agreements.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
For ADA accessible sidewalk improvements. Carol, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. Yes, before you today is a request to authorize the board chair to sign a temporary construction easement with the city of Sioux Falls. There is a request from the city for a temporary construction easement for the southwest corner of 6th and Dakota, right outside our building here. The corner is owned by the county and is the location of our southernmost parking lot. Attached is a drawing for your reference. Similar work was done in 2019 on 6th and Minnesota avenues. That work was, is being done in support of the ADA accessibility. With that, would request the chair to sign.
Commissioner Hagerger.
I beg a motion to approve with a question.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Hagerger.
It's the southwest corner, and you look at this map, and you really have no clue what they're doing, so are they just making it easy to get up on the sidewalk? I mean, I don't have a clue what they're doing by this.
Yeah, it's, they'll dig it up, and they'll make it more accessible as to how they do the slopes and everything that goes into it, so.
And so it's just a corner because there's a whole bunch of spots that are marked.
That's the corner.
So, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Are we looking, are we looking at Minnesota Avenue there as being, no, I see it better. I was confused a little bit.
North is going to the right.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Takes us to item 18, which is to consider a resolution supporting the passages of SB70 to allow driver's license applications, manual and written exam in Spanish. Carol Muller, good morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. South Dakota Legislature is considering SB70, which has been assigned to the Senate Transportation. Senate B7, Senate Bill 70, at a cost of $15,500, would provide driver's license exam applications, manuals, and the written exam for driver's license to be in Spanish. The driving test would be in English. Senate Bill 70 is supported for workforce development as there is a need for workers and Spanish-speaking individuals to fill vacant positions. It is estimated that Spanish-speaking immigrants can converse at a fourth-grade level in English or better. The challenge is that studying and taking the driver's license exams requires a higher level of English proficiency. It is estimated that 35,000 South Dakota residents speak Spanish in their homes. The passage of Senate Bill 70 would allow Spanish-speaking South Dakota residents to obtain a driver's license and have the mobility to work and provide for their family. Attached to this is multiple, multiple organizations that are supporting Senate Bill 70, including our Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce, and our Development Foundation are both on there also. This bill is being heard tomorrow, and attached is a resolution that would state that the Board of Commissioners of Minnehaha County, South Dakota, supports the passage of South Dakota's driver's exam application manual and the written exam in Spanish.
Questions for Carol? I know we talked about this a little bit last week at our meeting, and the direction was to come back today with a formal resolution, so.
I'd make a motion to send this letter.
And I would second, if I could comment.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Karski.
The 35,000 South Dakota residents speak Spanish, that's a larger number than I would have imagined. Close to 5% of our population in the state, those are 35,000 taxpayers. We're looking at a cost. We're looking at a cost- ... according to Commissioner Heiburger. You know, this is not only a workforce issue, it's a public safety issue, and making sure that people can be properly licensed to drive. It's such a small price to pay, and I think we owe it to 35,000 South Dakota residents that pay taxes.
Other comments or questions? Commissioner Bar.
Madam Chair, I've just been recently going through boxes and boxes of papers I got from my parents when they moved out of their home. I got 42 boxes, banker boxes of stuff. Anyway, I came across a letter confirming my baby brother's draft status, 1981, and it included translation into Spanish right along there. If you can serve in the military, it seems to me you ought to be able to drive in the United States. And I remember in basic training, I had one of my drill sergeants, Sergeant Marino, kicked my butt up and down hills all over South Carolina. He had served two tours in Vietnam, and could march faster than-
Somebody at the window has spent a lot of time trying to help somebody through with language issues to actually get through the written part, and then had them come back and fail the test. So, it's not a slam dunk that if you get through the written part, that you're going to pass the test. So, I think personally that the bill is very well drafted, and does deserve our support, so. Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, so roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, that takes us to, it's a good segue, I guess, into legislative update. Craig Dewey.
Morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. I serve as your registered lobbyist at the South Dakota Legislature, and it's been quite busy last couple weeks. I have been in Pierre most every day, and legislature has adopted a new bill sign-on system that is taking in electronic form. At the very end of last week was the deadline for unlimited bill submission by legislators, and so, we had an extra, I would guess somewhere around 200-plus bills drop, all within about a 24-hour period, so. ... that bill is in front of the House Taxation Committee. That will likely have a hearing this week or next week. We'll probably learn- Our office was in contact with the Governor's Office yesterday, and they confirmed that the bill is still being drafted by the Legislative Research Council, so we-
Senate Bill 68, which would have given us the ability to ask the citizens to allow us to take on some- And I think the citizens need to know that.
Anything else? I too just- ... been very supportive of us through this process, and, you know, I think we have done a really good job of making the case for the issue, and-
... probably shoot holes in almost everything that was said, and so, we will be reviewing those words for next year's testimony and figuring out how to do it, and continue to make contact through the year, talking with our local legislators and making the case, because it does make sense, because like Commissioner Bar said, we don't have any avenues except for to continue to raise property taxes. And this puts the burden on where the problem is coming from, alcohol. And it's not all alcohol problems, but at least that helps to pay some of the significant issues. We had a lot of support from different organizations. There's a part of that bill that would have, could have helped ambulances, which we all know we struggle with, and we think we have struggles. Try being a rural county, more rural than Minnehaw County, there's a lot of struggles with ambulances, and legislators were not interested in moving that to the Senate floor out of taxation, so it could at least be discussed openly, so. The other one I would just touch on quickly is that House Bill 1099, which is coming out of Cottington about building courthouses and facilities for- ... justify on behalf of that. That was supported unanimously by the association. There's a lot of counties out there that feel that this would be a significant help to them. We've already built our jail, or we're about done building our jail, but there are some of those counties that need new courthouses, that need jails, and they don't have a way to raise revenue other than to raise property taxes. And they've done a lot of research on this, and it could also be a really good bill for counties as they move forward with some of the building projects that are mandated by the state of South Dakota.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bar.
You know, we've tried to work on some alcohol bills over the years, and just the other day, former Representative Elizabeth May announced that she's going to contend for higher office. She is a very conservative person, and I am, she agreed with the idea of raising taxes to help Jackson County, which she represented. I don't agree with her on very many issues, but the fact that she was persuadable, I think, is to her credit, and I appreciated her support at that time, and that's what we need people to do, you know? If it's your job to raise taxes, to raise revenue, do your job. If it's your job to, you know, would you hire a police officer that promised never to shoot anybody? No. Why would you hire a politician that said never, under any circumstances, would they raise taxes? We've got trillion-dollar deficits on the national level right now, and it makes me a little crabby.
Okay, Commissioner Heiburger.
I'm going to make one more point, and then I'll be quiet. Commissioner Barth talked about having the courage to raise taxes. I think one of our points was, we weren't even asking legislators to raise taxes. We were asking legislators to give local control to commissioners in individual counties to make that decision with their taxpayers in their county on how they would like to pay for criminal justice. And so, they weren't even willing to let us have the discussion of whether local control was better. Okay.
If I could make one more comment, please, on that bill, just so that the public would understand what bill was being put forward, is that that would have been a maximum of a 1% tax. So, if you had a $100 hotel room, that would be a maximum of one extra dollar. If you had a $4 alcoholic drink, that would be an extra four cents. So, we're not talking about unrestrained growth in raising taxes.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Heiburger.
I have one, I'll make it short. This weekend, I attended the Crooks Fireman's Appreciation Suffer. The sheriff was there, and also Scott McMahon from Emergency Management, and I think maybe someone else, I can't remember for sure. Anyway, we had a nice time appreciating the firemen from Crooks. They said it'd been a while since they did it, and they gave out some awards, and it was a very nice evening.
Commissioner Bar.
I also went to a firefighter and ambulance event in Humboldt, and my ticket cost me $100, but I did win a small prize. Anyway, they mentioned that they have 25 members, they answered 278 ambulance calls last year, and 115 fire calls. So, 25 members, they're doing such a wonderful thing for their community and their area, and thank you.
I could add something, Jeff reminded me, there was 25 members in Crooks also, and their outstanding firefighter of the year was Stevie Boar. He actually belongs to the Lions and the Crooks Fire Department, and they said he is faithful, he does not miss a call, so.
Well, thank you to him, for sure.
Stevie Boar, lots of work.
Yeah, those volunteers are amazing, incredible people, so. Any other liaison reports? I would just note that I had the opportunity last week, when Commissioner Heiburger was up in Pierre, to attend a couple of the MacArthur Foundation meetings. We had some of the national folks here from MacArthur Foundation, and I left, and I've been struggling this morning with how to convey adequately the great work that is going on with that Safety and Justice Challenge, the funding by the MacArthur Foundation, and the expertise that they've lent us, which comes to us in a large part due to Commissioner Heiburger's efforts, and Aaron Serska's efforts, networking nationally, and work that they've been doing for years. But, you know, there's a lot of focus on, you know, building a new jail, and I think we don't adequately let the public know how much work is going on to keep people out of that jail. And that's what we focused on a lot. We got reports from a number of different working groups on some of the things that have gone on. The courts have been able to use some of that funding to do stress tests in their systems to help get people through the court system quicker, so they're not sitting in jail, but they're either getting access to treatment that they need, or they're getting back with their families, they're getting out on, before their trial. And it was actually just such an encouraging meeting, and I'd say that the folks from MacArthur view us as-
Golden children.
Golden children, yes. We are being held up as a community that really works well together collaboratively on this committee. There's folks from the city, folks from all aspects of law enforcement, from the courts to the State's Attorney's Office, to both the Public Defender's, Public Advocate's Office, and everybody is pulling together to look at our systems and see what ways we can improve to keep the community growing in a very positive way, and to keep folks out of jail and productively in society. And we've been, I think, are being asked to reapply for additional grant funding. That deadline is, or that next two-year application is in September 30th of this year. And so, I have lots and lots of scribbled notes, but from a high level, that, I think, is really the takeaway, is that there are really a lot of great things going here. You know, one project that was particularly impressive is through Kerry Benz and the folks that are working together in alliance to really look at folks who are, you know, friendly faces, I think they call them, but people who are utilizing a lot of resources in our community, and they focused originally on 12, and expanded that to 18, and they've got six of those folks placed permanently in getting the kind of services that they need to get back on their feet, and hopefully keep them out of the system that cycles them through emergency rooms and through our public safety. So, a lot of really, really great things, and I just really want to commend the folks that are working on that together. I think it's a great thing for our community and not well-understood, even from my perspective, I learned a lot of things, so. All right, any other liaison reports? Okay, new business? Any new business? Old business? Any old business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Or motion to recess, I apologize. I need a motion to recess.
Let's go to recess.
I have a motion. Did I hear a second?
Yes.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We'll take about a 10-minute break and reconvene at 10:15. Thank you. I was like, yes!